Good evening and welcome to the first Zoom meeting of the Kingman City Council on May 5th, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Annie, could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lingin-Felter. Councilmember Mello Keener. Councilmember Nelson.
Mayor.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins. And Councilmember Wade.
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we have no one for the invocation, so I'm going to ask that everyone join me in reflecting on or praying for our world and especially for our community as we go through and recover from this global pandemic. So if you'll join me, please, for a minute. Thank you. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. I think we have a flag that will be on the screen, and if you'd stand and join me in the pledge.
Am I missing the audio?
I think we lost the mayor.
Oh, this is gonna be fun.
Yeah.
Technology. Welcome to our new world.
The mayor is working on reconnecting right now.
The beauty of technology.
Gotta love it.
Hey, I heard Ken, he made it. That's impressive.
It's actually a small miracle.
I believe that.
Each old dog's new tricks.
There you go.
Redmond. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, different computer, different room, same city council meeting, May 5th. Okay. Thank you for joining in the pledge. Let's move on to appointments. And this evening, we have appointment, a candidate for the Economic Development Advisory Commission. And there are currently two vacancies on the city's Economic Development Advisory Commission, and six applications, I think five have been received. One was removed. The applicants include Naki, Nikki, Sewaya, Paul DiNublio, Bob Peroli, Terry Henderson, and Rennie Fawson. Staff recommends council appoint two of the applicants to serve on the Economic Development Advisory Commission. Do any of the council members have comments regarding any of these candidates? We did receive statements from two of them. Has everybody read their statements? Would we like to read those publicly? I'm not able to hear others, so Annie, can you hear them?
Did you want me to read those aloud, Mayor?
I think it would be good. I think it would be good to read the statements from those that we received.
Okay, the first statement I received was from Nikki Sewaya. She says, "Mayor and council members, I appreciate having served the city through the Clean City Commission. I look forward to the opportunity of continuing to serve the city by working to increase the economic development of Kingman. We have a great city with beautiful natural environment, great weather, and wonderful people. It is exciting that we are also a crossroads of the world as tourists come through on their way to the Grand Canyon, Las Vegas, Los Angeles, and Phoenix. We have many possibilities here around us, and I see Kingman growing, so there are more opportunities for all."
Thank you.
The second statement I received was from Terry Henderson. She says, "I've been a longtime supporter of Kingman, its culture, heritage, and growth. In the past, I have hosted community events, worked on the publicity and tourism committees of the chamber, and participated in various fundraisers. I have been pleased with the increased interest in downtown Kingman and continue to work on historical preservation projects. I would like to have a positive influence on the direction and character of growth in Kingman and its surrounding areas. What an exciting time with the new opportunities opening up at the industrial park, the expansion of the hospital and services it offers, the college and other new educational opportunities, Corridor 11, and Intersection Development. I feel my background in marketing, PR, and grant writing, along with a master's degree in educational leadership and another in educational technology, would bring skills and resources I can contribute should I be selected as a member of the Economic Development Advisory Commission. Thanks for your consideration, Terry Henderson."
Thank you, Annie. Do any of the council members have any comments about these candidates? Given that, I think that we have all received a ballot in our email, and at this time, I would ask us all to select two of the five candidates and send that email to Annie, and she will tally our votes. And Annie, if you would, let us know when you've received all of the tallies or all the votes.
I will. Okay, our tally is six votes for Nikki Sewaya, one vote for Paul DiNublio, one vote for Bob Peroli, three for Terry Henderson, and three for Rennie Fawson.
Okay, so Nikki is selected, and it sounds like we have a runoff between Rennie Fawson and Terry Henderson. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
So would you advise that we just send you another email with a vote for either Terry Henderson or Rennie Fawson?
You can do that, or if somebody wanted to do a motion, that would be fine, too.
Okay.
In that case, I would make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would make a motion that we would vote for Rennie Fawson.
I second that.
Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve Rennie Fawson for the Economic Development Advisory Commission. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, I will ask for, should we do a roll call vote, or how do we do this, Annie?
Yep, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, and I just wanted to ask Carl real quick, do we need to include Nikki in that motion?
I would like to let you finish this one first and then do her second.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Mayor Miles.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lingin-Felter.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Yes.
Councilmember Watkins.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wade.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion for Nikki Sewaya to approve her. Or do we need a motion since she got six votes? Let's go ahead and have.
Please.
Thank you, Carl.
I have a motion to approve Nikki for the commission.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. There's motion and second to approve Nikki Sewaya for the EDAC. Is there any discussion? Given none, all in favor, well, let's take a vote.
Mayor Miles.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lingin-Felter.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Yes.
Councilmember Watkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Wade.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, the next item of business is the call to the public. We asked for people to fill out forms in advance, and and I think we were going to take these electronically. In-person attendance is suspended for this meeting, so due to COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held through technological means. Public comments may be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office via email. So this was all publicly shared, and now if there are any comments, we will share them and make it a part of the public record. Annie, are there any comments from the public?
Madam Mayor, we did not receive any public comments.
Thank you. Okay, then let's move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, this item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. There are consent agenda items from A through, many, 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 A through P. Would any of the council like to remove a consent agenda item from the consent agenda for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I would like to remove, set aside item number E.
E, okay. Any other items that the council would like to remove? Okay. Given that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through P, exception of E.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. You need a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve A through P with exception of E, all in favor, I.
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 And the opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Let's look at item E, Beale Street State Design Concept Report and Final Design Project Agreement, ENG 19-0079. Request qualifications received November 31st, 2019 for the Beale Streetscape Design Concept Report and Final Design Project. There were a total of five submittals that were evaluated. Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions Inc. had the highest evaluation. Their references were checked, and they were notified. A scoping meeting was held with Wood and the city's team. Proposal was drafted and revised and is ready for approval. Staff recommends approval. Counselor Watkins.
I want to set this aside for discussion a little bit. I like the ideas of it. I am a little bit concerned concerning the coronavirus and the effect that it has had on our income for the city. And so I bring that up because of budget constraints and budget, you know, I just want to be sensitive to that. And I think it's an important project for downtown, but I think it's one of those things we could maybe set aside for a little bit until we get a better handle on what our budget income is going to be.
Thank you, Counselor Watkins. Any other comments on this?
Madam Mayor, I would have a few comments if I could. This is Vice Mayor Lingin-Felter, either addressed to Manager Foggan or to his staff. The first question would be the input from the public meetings. That input will be used to form the final eye of downtown streetscape construction. Is that correct?
Yes, it will be. There will be a number of public open meetings to take input from both downtown businesses as well as the community. Yes, we'll have a very active component of public input.
Okay, thank you. And then the only other question I would have is, you and I have discussed this before, but there was some discussion with Unisource about partnering with Unisource downtown on the light poles, and they were perhaps willing to partner with the city on doing some solar light poles. Is that still a scope?
Yes, so as part of the plan, it would be to work with Unisource to see if lower streetlights would work if they're, you know, if they're a willing partner, which I believe they are. Actually, bring the consultant, sit down with Unisource, and see what we could do with solar streetlights instead of hardwired. Of course, the cost to put wire underground is fairly expensive, but we would, of course, evaluate what the the cost and longevity of solar versus hardwired lights would look like.
That's good, good news. Along the same lines, I had a thought, it wasn't in the scope. But as a part of that conversation, if you were to go over to like the downtown Temecula, on their light poles, they also have wireless speakers, and they play music on the speakers, and it creates sort of like an ambiance in downtown. Would that be possible, too? Or could you guys talk about that maybe as well?
Yeah, so we did anticipate some street decorations, you know, banners, that kind of thing that would be part of the streetlights. We would definitely make sure that as we looked at the lighting system, that it would be able to either through some kind of wireless speaker system or, again, a hardwired speaker system, that that would be something that would be looked at. I've been in those downtowns as well.
Great, thank you.
I guess, Mayor, I would speak to Counselor Watkins' comment about the money side of this. We did budget for this project. We have that money available. We have made cuts, but in an effort to move forward with economic development and with the efforts of our departments, we feel like fiscally, we've gotten, you know, we've gotten ahead of the pandemic. I think you'll see that through the budget process, yes. There are cutbacks, but this one is one of those that I think would be beneficial to the community. Setbacks or delays on this just add to, I would say, the domino effect of the pandemic. And we've made cuts other places so that we could actually have the money to spend on this project.
Okay. Manager Foggan, I appreciate that comment and clearance, and I appreciate Vice Mayor's comments also. Like I said, I wanted to bring this out just so we did have some discussion on it. As you mentioned, the fees are not terrible, and you clarified, you know, some things for us, so I appreciate that.
Mayor, could I make a comment?
Certainly.
This is Jamie.
Okay, Counselor Staley, please go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to respond to Ken's concern because I agree we have to look for places to maybe cut back on spending. But historically, tourism has been Kingman's largest industry, and it's a place where the city makes quite a bit in our sales tax revenue. And these projects, they fix our flood issues downtown, our outdated infrastructure downtown, fixes ADA problems. They have a lot of sidewalks that are not AD compliant. And then the final phase being to beautify downtown to help encourage tourists so that we can compete with cities like Williams and Las Vegas for the people traveling through to the Grand Canyon. So I think that over the next couple of years, it's going to be really important that we do make investments in places that will encourage tourism and encourage revenue to come back to Kingman and for tourists to come back. And this is one good example of that.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any other comments?
Mayor Miles, this is Vice Mayor Lingin-Felter again.
Yes, I have Vice Mayor.
I don't know if Tina is on the call or on the Zoom, but a while ago, she had factored all of the recessions, all the booms, and said even when you factored all of that in, there was a conservative inflation rate of like 2.75%. And, you know, I'd still be curious, maybe if we could talk about that maybe tomorrow, if that still rings true to show that we're still going to be growing, even with the recessions and the booms. It all levels out to 2.75% inflation for 2017.
I think that tomorrow would be a good time as we're having the budget meetings, but, you know, those projections are based, as you said, they're over a period of time. And right now, the period of time is one of those where we are going to be having a contracted budget. But I do think that this has been factored in, and as Manager Foggan said, the cuts have been made in other parts of the budget. And I also believe this is critical for the long-term health of downtown, and that is key to our tourism. So I would support moving forward with it, understanding that we are all hoping the projected downturn is that which has been factored into this budget because I think there's been some pretty substantial cuts. So, any other comments? Well, Counselor Watkins, would you like to make a motion?
I'd be glad to, Mayor. I make a motion that we accept item E as it is stated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second to accept item E of the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Then I would call for a vote.
Mayor Miles.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lingin-Felter.
Yes.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Yes.
Councilmember Watkins.
Yes.
And Councilmember Wade.
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you unanimously. Thank you. Well, we have no old business, so we'll move on to new business, and that is the adoption of Main Street program by the city of Kingman. The Economic Development Director, Garrett Kellogg, will deliver a presentation on the Main Street America program and request council's endorsement and continued city support of the Kingman Main Street program. Staff recommends approval. We'll turn it over to Mr. Kellogg.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, this will be our first shot at doing a PowerPoint via this new technology, so I'm going to now go to a screen share. Basically, what we put together is a PowerPoint which kind of reviews the Main Street program and goes over some of the highlights, and then in the end, the city's endorsement. Just as a front note, we have been extremely active with Main Street, especially right now during COVID-19 with our new young lady onboard, Gina Gavazzi. She's doing certainly a bang-up job, so let me see now, I'm gonna hit the technology. Okay.
I hope it works better for you than it did for me.
Oh, boy. Hi. I thought it would. Hang on a second, wait a minute. Hang on, Mayor, excuse me. No. Annie, I'm having trouble. I put this onto my screen, and I thought I could just carry it over from my my main page, so do I need to come all the way out of here? Oh, you're muted on me, Annie. Oh, Doug's gone, and I thought I had.
There you go, Annie, now you're unmuted.
If it's open on your desktop, Gary, you should be able to screen share it.
Okay, it is on my desktop.
So it needs to be on the, if you have dual monitors, it needs to be on the screen that you have your Zoom open on?
I do not have my dual monitor. I have single.
Okay.
It worked before. Doug's on it, and I'm sorry.
Would you like me to open it and screen share it for you?
If you would, then you have it.
Give me just a moment.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I thought I had.
I love redundant systems.
Oh, me too. I'm still familiar. We're the best-laid plans, so. Mayor, I can read some of this. I will let you kind of just go through, we can kind of go through it, so I don't want to drag it on too long. It's not a lengthy PowerPoint, but fairly wordy in some places.
If you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Annie.
As I say, Gary, we should have all that in our packet.
Yeah, it gets there.
Yeah. So we can follow along with you.
Yeah, go ahead and start, Gary.
Okay. I've got to get over to it now. I'm afraid if I click out, I'm not going to be lost. I'm doggone it here.
You can shrink Zoom and you'll still be active.
All right, here we go. Okay. All right.
There's Main Street America.
There we go.
New business.
Okay, we are in. Okay. One second, let me get up there and...
Gary, if you'll just let me know when to turn the page.
Okay. All right, Annie, I'll just, we'll just start out. The first one is really about Main Street, and that Main Street America has been helping revitalize older and historical commercial districts for more than 35 years, and today is a network of about over 1,600 neighborhoods. This is probably the biggest reason that we embraced it and certainly was a basis for the economic development. So let's hit number two, or number three grassroots, please. Made up of small towns, mid-sized communities, and urban commercial districts, the thousands of organizations, individual volunteers. Main Street is truly a unique program, and when a number of us had the opportunity to go up to Seattle, Washington, or to Seattle to view it, we really got a feel for the program. And so it literally can and breathes new life into places that people call home. With that, number four, as you know, I think we certainly all feel the same way that Main Street drew out of the recognition that a community is only as strong as its core, and our Main Street is, has been for a long time, the core. I think the really good part for us is lately, we have certainly seen, certainly before COVID-19, you know, the revitalization of downtown. So we're going to continue to work on and make sure that that core remains strong. Main Street empowers communities to set their own destinies, while revitalization is challenging work. The Main Street program offers a roadmap for locally owned and locally driven prosperity. That's probably one of the most unique things that we certainly have seen in our downtown area and encourages, the entrepreneurship that has taken place with these small upstart businesses. And so one of the things I want to tell you that during COVID-19, it's to really make sure how we can help in so many different ways, certainly giving them, helping them with the SBDC loans, et cetera, program so that they stay alive and keep our downtown alive. Okay, you know, probably one of the real earmarks for when Main Street launched was the, certainly the beautiful mural, and... Main Street, it has a four-point approach. I'll kind of just let you look at over there. Economic vitality, design, community transformation, organization, and promotion. Now, I just want to tell you, as your city staff, we've been involved in all of these steps, and that's why we are so intimately tied to Gina, this is the person that we brought onboard, to make sure that she continually has our leadership and guidance and access to our resources to continue to help Main Street.
Gary, this is Vice Mayor Lingenthaler. Are you on slide number seven?
I am on slide number seven, that's correct, I'm sorry. Now, we'll be moving to slide number eight, please. Kingman Main Street is incorporated in 2019. The city is the actually primary sponsor. We have attended the Main Street National Conference in Seattle, as I noted earlier, and the city will sponsor attendees from Kingman to future council, future meetings for that. Also, an EDAC member and the city councilperson and the city staff. So we're, as we say, we're tied really close. So now we'll move on to slide number nine, please. We partnered this year with the Alliance AmeriCorps Vista Program. We did the Vista Volunteer. We went through quite a process there. We actually had the Main Street Board and everybody interview her via Skype, and it was selected was Gina Gavazzi. This is an extremely bright young lady, just a recent graduate from Penn State, and I'm very happy to say that in her selection, we found a good self-starter. And so she's really been a big help, and she came in at one of the most difficult of times, but as we pull out of this, I think she's going to be an integral part of that. We have provided her the office space. We share management oversight. She talks almost daily with Sylvia Schaefer, who oversees our commercial and retail. She works closely with Josh and Natalie down there, and so they are helping her every single day. And so her contract period for Gina is actually going, it goes from March to March. And so it is certainly my hope, and maybe we'll see within the next few months that Gina would then join us on a permanent basis. Slide number 10, please. This is the Main Street activities. I think that, you know, one of the, certainly the biggest hits certainly has been the First Fridays, and as we move into this new future, maybe it will take on a little different form, but I think it did really offer a revitalization to the downtown area. And the one thing I really wanted to stress here, when Main Street first came to the city, their biggest concern was, how do we block the streets off safely? How do we make this function happen? And so under both the prior city manager, Jim Bacon, and then with Mr. Foggan, we had stepped up to the plate and provided that safety and the street blockage and stuff like that so that these events could take place. So we certainly lifted that burden and made that possibility. One of the big events this year was the Cookie Crawl. That was extremely successful. Again, it offers the opportunity for all of Kingman, not just downtown, to come down to the downtown and enjoy it. The Mojave Community College Small Business People, we work really closely with the SBDC, and that has become a really intimate relationship now through this COVID-19 and the other stuff that's coming down through the Fed. So we work very closely with businesses. We have, through this COVID-19, visited a number of our businesses, looked at their needs and concerns, and thought about what we're going to look at and what we're going to do for the future. I don't think it's any secret that MCC had announced that they will be actually establishing some SBDC office areas downtown, which will certainly provide for additional training, access to resources, and one-on-one counseling. And the nice part, it will be downtown in Kingman. It will be offered to all of Kingman, but will be located in our downtown area. One of the upcoming events that they're still planning, and that is a turquoise festival, and so as you know, Kingman for years has been known, although it's somewhat quiet, as the turquoise capital, if not the United States of the world. And so they have, the Main Street people and their board have embarked on this journey to have a turquoise festival. So I think, you know, if we can continue to move through COVID and gradually open things up, that this is certainly a good possibility. Okay, we're now on slide number 14. One of the other ways that we certainly have been supportive is with our Parklet and Pedlet program, which I know you're familiar with, the facade improvement grant program, and the community cleanup. We worked with them, and although Main Street did establish a downtown map that they generated, the kiosk remodel, we worked hand-in-hand with them, and also in that small area just outside of the powerhouse, we made that certainly available to Main Street, which is that little gazebo area. And so we remodeled that and put in the new glass and everything, and so they'll be working certainly to add the maps and other materials for the downtown area. With that, we are on slide 15. So today, what we are looking for from the council is the endorsement and the continued city support of the Kingman Main Street program. And so I guess with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you, and if there's any questions, I'll certainly be happy to answer them where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Okay, does the council have any questions for Mr. Kellogg or comments? Okay, I would like to thank you for the presentation and for the work that has been done. I'm really delighted to hear about the Vista person and the work that they're doing with you and with the Main Street. I guess at this point, I would ask for an endorsement of the council. I would offer it, except that I think we may need a vote.
Mayor, I would love to make a motion that we adopt Kingman Main Street as our formal program for downtown revitalization.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, David.
Okay, we have a second by Counselor Wade. So is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to adopt the Main Street program formally by the City of King. All in favor, aye. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lingenthaler?
Yes.
Councilmember Mello Keener?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Yes.
Councilmember Watkins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Okay, the next item of business will be department reports, and the first department report is the White Cliffs Trail update.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a while since we've talked about the White Cliffs Trail, and so as we've been doing some work, it just thought that we would give everybody an update and let them, let everybody know what we're doing and what we're still waiting for. So I invited Mike Mirsman to just walk you through, hopefully, a presentation of the White Cliffs project, just to remind everybody what it is and really why we're working on it. Mike?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Good evening. I'm going to give this a whirl. I'm going to do the screen sharing first, and see how that goes. You can still hear me, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
We're doing good so far, then. Should be this.
I see it.
Okay, and you can still hear me. So basically, what I want to talk about first is, there's been a lot going on. This trail has, the grant funding has gone from $14,000 to $48,000, and there's been several delays through the project, and so I can't tell you tonight that it's a go yet, but it's getting closer. And as I've talked about, we haven't been sitting and waiting for the project. We started on the rebuilding of the bridge, which has been a huge project, and it's really awesome. I'm very proud of the job that our team did. Picture on the left, there's, there was no bike access or ADA access to that area, and now there's ADA parking with the path you can ride your bike and ADA access, and we're going to be putting this week a picnic table pad over here, and hopefully in the future we'll get a part of another grant. We'd like to see a Ramada here even. So this is what we've been doing lately down there, and it's been really exciting as we're doing it. People are coming by and telling my team members, great work, and they really did a really good job, and we're very proud of it. The White Cliffs Wagon Wheel Trail now has ADA access, like I said, and we would like to create a viewing area for ADA to get up to where the wagon, where they could see the wagon wheels in the future. That would be part of another grant in the future. And there's a trail that bypasses the wagon wheels trail, and this is off to the north. If you've been there, it veers off to the north and goes out around. Here it is, the yellow arrows are where the White Cliffs Wagon Wheels Trail is, and the red arrows point out where the bypass trail is. So people can ride their bikes and walk up that way around the project, and this is just another, shows another version of it. And the blue here is the ADA access with the bridge. Here, this slide shows where we'd like to have a viewing area of the White Cliffs Wagon Wheels in the future, and that would be part of another grant down the road as well. Basically, after storm damage, inmate crew went and cleaned the north bypass trail up. We've got signs that are going to be put up that tell about the bypass trail, and we've done a lot of work, if you see here, before and after of maintaining the wagon wheels, even cleaning out a lot of the debris that gets washed down there, cleaning it out. This is of the upper trail that's part of the grant, and as I mentioned, there's been several delays with the grant from the government shutdown to the archaeological reports. Last week, I didn't have information to put in here. I was waiting for a phone call from Maggie Bowler from the ADOT Historic Preservation Team, and she told me last week that she's approving this and putting it through, and it will go then back to the Arizona State Parks for their final approval. And city manager Foggan has been actively involved in getting information from Alvin Stumpf from the ADOT Northern Region Engineer, and I'm working closely with Jeffrey Schmidt from the Arizona State Parks. And I talked to Jeffrey Schmidt today, and he said that this could possibly be approved within the next two weeks. So I don't want to get too excited about it until it happens. What we get the approval to proceed is what we're waiting for. And like you said today, that's very close to happening with what we've, talking with the people from ADOT's review on this. So we're very excited about it, and like I said, we haven't been sitting and waiting. We've gone to town, getting the work done, and we're ready to go with the project. And that's about it for my report. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mirsman. That's a great report. Are there any comments from the council? Well, I think we're all very, very happy to see that progress. It's phenomenal, really, what transformation is going on with those trails.
Mayor, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, you might, of course.
First, I want to thank you, Mr. Mirsman. It looks great out there, and one of the positives that's come out of the pandemic is that people are going out and they're exploring our trails. There are people who have lived here a really long time, they've never been to White Cliffs, and they're blown away by it. And so it's really nice that they're experiencing it as it's being fixed up, and that now there is an ADA parking space and that you can access the bridge. So my question to you is, the grant money, I think it's about $60,000 now?
No, it's $48,000 is the total of the grant. The total project is $60,000, which we have to contribute to it as well.
Okay. And then is that, is the next phase to build those yellow lines?
Yes, the upper trail that was there. The mile half, the upper trail, that's going to, it's going to be beautiful, it's going to go up through the canyon. This was designed by the Crata Group, which did a great job with this, and I'm very happy with the job that BLM has really helped us out a lot, too. I wanted to be sure to touch on that, because they've been very helpful as well.
Yes, so that's really exciting. That was my only question, is just what the next phase of it was, and again, thank you so much. I think this is a great project.
Yes, I've told everybody that from ADOT and from Arizona State Parks, we're shovel-ready. We are ready to go on this, and they want to get it out of this year's fiscal year budget, so they're excited, I think, to get it funded as well, so.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's phenomenal. Any other comments? Thank you so much, Mr. Mirsman. Appreciate all the leadership there and collaboration with all these partners, and it really is paying off. Okay, the next order of business is the Kingman Fire Department Annual Performance Report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and try to attempt to share my screen as well, so make sure we can see. Can you see that okay? Because I cannot. Are you seeing that?
I see.
Read your email.
Email.
I don't want that. How about that? I don't want that. How about that?
That one will work.
How about that? So you can answer some emails for me this evening, but I'm just glad I did something that Gary could not. So I, I think this will win automatically, so. I'll keep this short. I know you have this in your packets as well. You know that I can talk about my department or departments all night and the passion that we have for our organization, but obviously, this was scheduled for a couple of months ago, and for the last couple of months, we've been dealing with COVID and some other things, but we wanted to highlight a few things from 2019, and a few things in my opening remarks. A couple of things that, that our department has become is very change adaptable and very progressive, but I'm very, very proud of that. The men and women that work for us are constantly being challenged with new expectations, new programs, new sources of excellence, and they always rise to the occasion. We can challenge one another with continuous improvement, and although some of those can be interesting discussions, we always come out the other side with a better product and a better organization because of it. And I'm very, very proud of that. And if you see this little, this little sticker on the bottom of page two, that's our accreditation sticker. And one thing that I'm very, very, very proud of is the fact that we are an internationally accredited ISO One department. And the structural framework that that, that that provides to our organization is, is something that not a lot of people realize what that, what that has, what it takes to have that and maintain that year after year. And that's, so that's something we're very proud of. As you get down to the, our mission values, this is our mission values as an organization. When we came here five years ago, and, and this is developed by our, by our members. We, we get together every year, and they really buy in. They have a lot of passion for this, and it shows in the, in the things that we do. Our demographics, you can see by the bottom of this page, is always interesting when you have a new publication, how you can find some numbers that are already wrong. But you can kinda see how diverse we are in our organization. As you know, we're not just a fire department anymore. We are, we are, we run the dispatch center. We respond to all hazards regardless of what that is. And now with community development that we've, we've taken in with planning, zoning, and the building department over the last couple of years. The next page, we really start talking about some of the things that we accomplished in, in the last year, and I can make that a little bit bigger. I apologize. But I'll just kinda walk through a couple of things, and, and one thing that we really focused on the last year was CPR. Our cardiac survivability rates in the community. We really make that both proactive and reactive. The things that we can do proactively, education, classes, CPR certification, all the way to the way we respond, and we have a great relationship with K RMC and our medical director, and that shows right now through COVID in our daily interactions with them and the support we have from them. Increasing our cancer awareness. Cancer awareness among firefighters is a huge topic, and, and we take that change very, very seriously to protect our firefighters. That's our number one thing out in the field. And the measures we take, I will stack up against anybody in the country, because we, we try to be proactive for the safety and health of our firefighters. All of us have probably been exposed to somebody with cancer in their, in their lives. And quite frankly, I've had it with a couple of other organizations as this one as well, and it's something we fight very hard to protect our members. One thing, if you see August 2019, we added the Explorer Program with the JTED Program with Amy West. That's been a huge success, and even we had combat that through, through the, through COVID as well, doing some online pieces. And we're actually gonna finish that program in December. COVID has definitely derailed that, like it has the schools, and we've been challenged with that. But we're gonna see that through, and, and you'll see that graduating class in the future, so. August 19 also led to the Service Management Agreement with NACFED, which still continues today very successfully. As, as that relationship continues, that management continues, and we see the positive benefits both in professionalism, response, and capabilities of, of NACFED as, as we work together in this community. And again, I'll go back to the very start of this. When we started that, it was to make a better, safer community in Kingman, because that line of, let's say Gordon, when you cross over into the district, nobody knows where that is. But when they call 911, they're gonna get a professional, well-trained organization with professional members, and I think we're doing that. We're, we're taking huge steps in that as we've gone. Looking forward, in our dispatch center, we've integrated text to 911, which is a big step for us, allowing more integration of technology into our dispatch center. If we skip ahead a little bit, the things that I always like to get into, obviously, as you see our organizational charts, very dynamic, very dynamic as we take on different parts of the city. With two, two assistant chiefs, five battalion chiefs, a communications center manager, a building official who's now a community development manager, so it's very, very dynamic as we go. It's not your typical fire service or fire department anymore. As we look at the next slide, because eighty-two percent of what we do is EMS. We know that. We embrace that, and we're very good at that. We, we take a lot of pride in that. So if we see those, that call volume of seventy-eight hundred calls, that doesn't count a couple of things that we've, we've integrated to reduce our call volume with the measures and dispatch for EMD, emergency medical dispatch. So we get the right resource, the right place, and, and quite frankly, in some instances, an ambulance for a non-emergency transfer, someplace, some, something that individuals may need instead of a big red engine with red lights and sirens going out. So so that's something where we also work hard. If we integrated those calls back into our call volume, we'd be at about ninety-five hundred calls. And what that also does is impact our travel times because of when we're out on those type of calls, when the emergency events such as cardiac arrest or fires, those first few apparatus may not be at once. Going into our, our dispatch center, we've seen lots of improvement in our dispatch center. Up and to include today, this week, actually Friday, starts our Kalia, which is the law enforcement accreditation for dispatch centers. Our assessment starts this week for their accreditation process, which I'm very, very proud of considering where we've come, and, and this graphic on the screen of one minute, twenty-five seconds per whole dispatch center is meeting national standards. It's exceeding national standards, because if we go back two and three years ago, that number was closer to three minutes and thirty seconds, three minutes and forty-five seconds. So some of the steps we've taken, the training, the proactive approach that our dispatch center and communications center has taken is, is very, very dramatic. So a couple of things to, to kinda wrap up, you, I've emphasized this before, our busiest area is Station 22 there at Harrison and Indian Vine. That's our most busiest area, followed closely by Station 23 up on Gordon, across from the shopping center up there. Those are our two busiest areas. That kinda oval shape right there takes in the majority of our calls, and it shows by the calls that are actually taking place up there. If you look at twenty-two hundred calls and almost two thousand calls, just between those two, those two stations, it's pretty dramatic. And again, but just by those, those apparatus here. But the one thing I wanna emphasize that we've done here is the implementation of the squad. We run one squad out of Station 22 from seven AM to seven PM kind of time of day staffing. We know our days are busier by looking at, at data that we could staff that, and that count for four hundred and one calls this last year, and that's down a little bit, because we don't use overtime for that. We use time, our, our daily staffing model and part-time firefighters to staff that. We've even added part-time paramedics, and we're about to add part-time or civilian paramedics and civilian EMTs to staff that as well. Why that's so important is we can send out an SUV on, with that squad, and it will take care of those, those calls that they can run, leaving my big red engine in service in my busiest district. So the redundancy is taken care of. So for that duplicity of calls, my other engine isn't coming from, let's say downtown, all the way up the hill into that fire district. So, so that's why that's so important. Our biggest type of calls is obviously breathing, breathing in the sick person. Sick person is a broad, broad scale, but but we, we break that down. We pay a lot of attention to that. If we look at far, forty cardiac arrests, that cardiac arrest is the fire of the EMS side. It's such a low-frequency, high-risk event. That's why we put so much emphasis on that. If you look at resuscitation attempted and bystander CPR, we wanna increase that bystander CPR in, in a lot of ways, because cardiac survivability rate is tied directly to that bystander CPR. So if I'm a bystander and I can start that, we can educate people. To start CPR in advance, it's a win for us. Something we're very proud of, our training. Our training in five years has, has grown dramatically. And I'll go back to even the year 2014. This number was about three thousand. So in the last several years, we've grown upwards of thirty thousand hours of training in our organization. And I'm very, very proud of that. And if you see in last year's budget, this building was approved. It's under construction and should be out by August. So you'll see a huge emphasis on live burn training and the training that, that replicates our community with some mid-rise buildings as far as the hospital, hotels, other buildings, that we can actually do some more live training on. Obviously, as we kinda wrap up, obviously, we take, have taken in community developer, which is planning and zoning and the building department. We've had building department going on three years, I believe. Such as time flies when you're having fun, I would say. But it's been, it's been really good. As you can see, we get in all those offices all the time, and the hiring of Chris Young has allowed us to, to really evolve that department quite a bit in the last, in the last few months. Everything from abatement to our planning and zoning pieces, even some branch inspection pieces. So our planning processes are continuing to improve, our turnaround times in coordination with other departments. That facilitation has gotten so much better over the last couple of years, and I think will only continue to improve as we introduce some technology and things like that. So so with that, public education, it used to be, we reach out in a lot of different ways. This is an area of focus that was kinda non-existent, other than a couple, couple of programs, a couple of mainstay things, and now you can see how diverse we are, and everything from knox box installations, child safety seats to, to a little bit of everything. We like being out in public, and that will only improve in the future. After being locked down for a couple of months, I have people dying to get out in the public and do something. So so with that, that's, that's, that's kinda my presentation, and anything, any questions that I can answer for you about our department and anything else?
Thank you, Chief Rhodes. Counselors, are there any comments or questions for Chief Rhodes?
I had one question.
Go ahead.
I'm curious about the CPR training and what we can do to help get more people to sign up. How do you, how do you start a class and, and get people in it?
So we've, we've evolved that, everything from when, when we kinda started, the emphasis even among city employees. So even city employees that is not their main function. We go out to different locations every month. Once a month, every month, we'll go set up and we'll do hands-only CPR, because that's kinda what CPR is evolved to. Now, those places that need certification in the city, amongst city employees, we provide all the CPR training to, certification to all city employees that, that require that. Now, we also offer it to other businesses and things like that, and we've started doing that over the last year. And so all you, all push people our way. We'll guide them down the path. We'll take care of them. We charge enough to, to recuperate costs for boats and materials. That's about it. We, we actually built it into the fee schedule a couple of years ago. When we did that, worked with Dena, we walked through that process, and we actually have a lineup and setup just for that. So it kinda keeps funding itself. So it works very well. I don't think we can do enough of that. That, that to me is one of the, the benchmarks of our, of that community risk reduction group, and the emphasis that we focus on.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Oh, Chief, I have one question. You know, over the past few months, we've been in many meetings telephonically together
Yes, ma'am.
about the pandemic, and I, I appreciate your participation and City Manager Foggan, of course. But I'm wondering with the impact that have happened now with this pandemic, do you foresee ongoing impacts as we go into the next year? I think everything you've said and from what I know from the meetings, we are positioned well to respond, but I just would like for you to speak to that a bit.
So I think, just like anybody else, the next couple of days in budget meetings, I think we're all challenged to keep the status quo, keep our business running. But the one thing I can, I can guarantee is you'll have professional firefighters, professional dispatchers, members of our planning, zoning. I got, I got great people, and it, in most days, it makes it really, really easy, because they go over and above what's called for. And a good story to that is we recently had, there's an LA city firefighter that's passed away within our town. Our honor guard has stepped up, and they're actually standing watch at the funeral home and doing some other things, and we're actually escorting him out of town. I didn't prompt that. I don't have to prompt that. I got, I got personnel to handle those things. The other thing is our training. We take our training very, very seriously. So regardless of what hazard that is, we continue to look at those things, and we have to adapt. We're a very adaptable department, and I, I started. We're very, very change-ready organization, and COVID challenges every one of us in this meeting, from city leadership down to department heads, down to my firefighters. And the next year's gonna be very interesting, but I can promise you, you'll have a, you'll have a great fire harbor responding. I can promise you that.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe that. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, this is Vice Mayor Lingianfelter. I would Chief Rhodes, I just take this opportunity to say that this is a very professional-looking annual report. You did a really good job on it, and I especially like the fact that you used a bunch of infographic to communicate a bunch of information to the public. I think that looks really good. So I just wanna applaud you for that. Thank you.
Just don't look at some of the errors. I can circle those for you. Just let's take the graphics. I know Annie, Annie is, will have a fit with this, but I really appreciate that, because we've, again, I think that report should reflect who we are, both as a, as a department, as a city, and I think we've taken a big step with this. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. So at this point, we will move on to our, our last department report, which will be on the October 19 pandemic update. And before we, before I turn that over to Manager Foggan, I just wanted to say a few words. I wanted to express the appreciation, I'm sure, on behalf of the entire council, our staff, the leadership team, all of the staff who have worked so diligently to safeguard our city. And of course, a shout out, of course, to our first responders, the fire and the police, who are heroes in this situation, day in and day out. And I also want to express my gratitude to the citizens of Kingman, because I, I've seen a lot happening in the last few months, and I tell you, we have a community that we can be proud of, and people are caring and sharing so that we all get through this together, and it's a hard and difficult struggle for a lot of individuals and businesses, but I truly believe that we will come out of this stronger, and because we are together, we will come out safely and stronger. And so I just wanted to make those comments, because I'm very, very proud to be able to serve this city, because it's a wonderful city. And with that, I will turn it over to Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor, and just really take this opportunity, first to thank the mayor for her leadership, her help, her willingness to sit through a whole bunch of these kind of meetings, these Zoom and conference calls. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for that and for being there, you know, twenty-four seven every single day, so to you for that. I also just wanted to update everybody on what a great job I think that my team has done in, in this. I also just wanted to update everybody on what a great job I think that my team has done in, in this. You know, I, I would be remiss to, and to try to call out everybody that has helped would, is just not possible. But all of our services have been deemed to be essential. And we have employees that have worked from home, have shown up day in and day out through the worst pandemic that, that the world has known. And we have kept, not only have we kept the services going, but as you can see from Chief Rhodes' presentation is we've, we've done things above and beyond. And so just a big shout out to all of my people. The Police Department, the Fire Department, of course, have done a great job. The, our partners, you know, the hospital, it's been a great opportunity to work closer with the hospital. And just want to make sure that that, that was stated. As far as our, our efforts, we continue to follow the governor's guidelines. The governor, of course, this week is opening the economy a little bit quicker than we thought, which I have to say we're, we're happy about and, and hope that it works well. We, as a community, as a city organization, will open backup to the, to the public starting Monday, May 11. And we will have measures in place to continue to keep the public safe as well as our employees. I am happy to report that, that we, we've not had any of our employees out on any kind of COVID quarantine. Of course, I'm looking for some wood to touch on that right now because obviously we don't want to jinx ourselves, but we've done just a phenomenal job of keeping spaces clean. That commitment continues into the future. Big shout out to our Parks Department who are continually keeping our parks sanitized, even with equipment closed. They continue to do that, knowing that we can't be there to stop people all the time from climbing on playground equipment and sitting down at tables. And we're hopeful that in the next few days or within the next few weeks, the governor will release us to open our parks fully. And you have our commitment that we will continue to sanitize and keep our, our public places clean and, and germ-free as, at least as much as we possibly can. So a big thank you to the Parks Department for that. I also want to thank Chief Rhodes for heading up the emergency management team and for working with the county so closely. I think that it's really he and his team that were the true leaders. And just want to make sure that we acknowledge his, his role in that. As you know, from the governor's orders this week, that we will start seeing retail reopen this week as well as hair salons and restaurants are going to be up and running first of next week. And so we're, and our efforts to try to make sure and help them, a big thank you to Gary and his team as well. So I just, just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that we've been actively working this and it's been a real team effort. And that's kind of my report, Mayor, so thank you.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Well, I just want to express my appreciation, Manager Foggan. It, it has been a 24/7 job and, and I feel like the city has moved through it very, very, I won't say seamlessly because it's been, it has been a difficult couple of months, but I want to acknowledge that and just the, the leadership that kept it steady and keeps us moving forward. And that's, that's what we're going to do.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I, one, before we leave that subject, I just need to thank Colleen Haynes, who has been one of our people that are working from home. She has done an amazing job, press release-wise and just social media-wise. I noticed she shared with me the post, the most recent post that, of the governor's newest order. And we have reached 16,000 people. So she's doing a great job.
That's, that's a good number to reach, yes. Okay. Next order of business is council requests for future reports and updates. Would any of the, do any of the council have requests for future reports and updates? I'm hearing crickets. And I, so, so at this point, I would say we just keep on with your agendas, Manager Foggan. I'm sure we will continue to give updates on the COVID-19 and other department reports as we're going forward. I did skip one, which is the announcements by mayor, council members and city managers. So I will retract and go back to that. And Manager Foggan, I'll start with you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just as a reminder, we will start our budget meetings with the council via the Zoom app tomorrow, starting at nine o'clock. And we will run that meeting till noon. And then if there's additional information to be covered, we have Thursday as well. And that would start also at nine and run until we've completed the information. I, I am hopeful that we will not go to noon on Thursday. So that's really what I have.
Okay. Counselor Watkins?
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Counselor Wade?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Nelson?
Nope, I have nothing today.
Counselor Mello Keener?
Nothing today.
Counselor Staley?
Neither.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, I just want to mention that, that we have during this pandemic month, past month, I've transitioned to a new police chief. And I just want to welcome Chief Cooper. I know that that has been done in the press and newspaper, but I just wanted to add our thanks and appreciation for his leadership as he takes this mantle on as the Chief of Police. And the other thing is, this is Teacher Appreciation Week. And so I just wanted to announce that because, you know, there are many ways to express appreciation. It's not so much face-to-face these days. But if there are ways that you can thank a teacher, they are forging the future and they continue to forge the future in innovative ways and teaching from wherever they need to teach. And we're just really thankful and appreciative to all the teachers out there and educators. So that's really, really my announcements for tonight. And so at this point, if there are no further announcements, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second that.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.